I would like to call this regular meeting of the town council to order September tenth, twenty twenty-four. Would you please rise and follow me and pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance in the black of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Just for note for the record, Councilman Tim Feagle will not be attending tonight. He called and he is a little bit under the weather. We have an agenda before us. Is there a motion to accept the agenda?
Second.
Move to second at any questions, discussion, changes. If not, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Eyes carry the agenda is adopted. First item on the agenda, approval of minutes, regular meeting, August thirteenth.
Move to approve the minutes.
Motion to approve is your second.
Second.
Are there any errors, omissions, or changes to the minutes as presented? Going none, those in favor of accepting the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post nay. Eyes have the minutes accepted. Now open to public remarks. Just a moment. Please keep your I guess you're running up. You can complete your statement. I will. Got me at a loss. Give your remarks under three minutes if possible. Give your name and address.
Eric Rosenberg, fifteen Bay Road. I'm the Chair of the Commission on Aging. And just wanted to say that this Friday is the one-year anniversary of the founding of East Hampton Community Cares. Organization that matches volunteers with adults who are either disabled or seventy years or more older who need all sorts of helping hands with chores like driving outdoors and social type visits. Next Wednesday, the eighteenth of September, we're having a public information session here in order to try to get more volunteers signed up and people who need services. It'll be six thirty here, a free meeting with refreshments. It's going to be out in newspapers. You've probably seen posters, et cetera. But if you know people who might be interested either in volunteering or in who need services, this meeting will have the information where they can contact me and that information's in the River East article coming out Friday. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Sir.
Hi, my name is Matthew Puzzo. I live at two-two-six West High Street. I wanted to talk for a minute about green spaces and just open land for people in general. I feel that there's a very big lacking of open land. For example, like in places like Florida, and I know I'm comparing this a massive state park like the Everglades. There's an, there's an easy twenty-mile radius of just like uncut undeveloped forest land. And there's even more than that. In Connecticut, you're lucky if you find four miles. You're lucky if you find four. I've only found four in like one place. A few years ago, I saw a golden owl. Last past year, I saw two snapping turtles who probably were laying eggs. Whenever I confront anyone in town about it, or even in the state, I get told that we're not really concerned about the squirrels. I never once mentioned the squirrels. What I will mention is, is that we have a limit of trees and in Connecticut, and we have an overdevelopment of people on many ways. Connecticut is one of the most overpopulated states. Now, I don't mind having a lot of people, but if we're just going to go randomly cutting places down and building, you know, concrete parking lots, we're not going to have any more places for people. And it seems that every, every time we build something, we also have, have areas that get abandoned, such as one fifty-one Main Street in East Hampton. That's been abandoned for a while, and I'm wondering if the town council could approve of the town buying it and turning into public property. It's on the lake. It'd be a very good place for people to go. And it would be something for people in the town, which we already pay taxes for, that they can go outside and do things at rather than staying at home. And it just makes me think of a quote. This quote is, "They took all the trees, put them in a museum, and they charged people a dollar and a half just to see them. You don't know what you got until it's gone." That was Joni Mitchell, an old song, and it seems to echo very true nowadays. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to make public comments? Not?
If I may, I will make one.
Yes.
I'm David Cox. I'm the town manager. I do live here in town, but my purpose tonight right now is to introduce to you Juliette Hodge. Juliette began working for the town as the planning and zoning official on August nineteenth of this year. And we're very excited to have her, Juliette. If you'd just stand up so we know that everybody knows who we're talking about. Juliette served for a number of years on the western part, or rather, the eastern part of the state. And so she comes to us with a great deal of experience in land use and zoning and a little bit of economic development. And so she was a very attractive candidate. So we're very excited to have her and welcome her early.
Well, welcome.
You can run off and go home now so you don't you'll be here. Thank you.
Item five on the agenda, presentations. A presentation of the Board of Education, quarterly financial report.
We have some material in your packet, but I'm going to invite the superintendent to come up and the business manager, Tim Van Tessel and Karen Acetta, to sort of run through where we landed for the Board of Education this year. And then maybe we'll talk a little bit about how we work through that overall.
Good evening, members of the council. Once again, just as a refresher, my name is Tim Van Tessel, your superintendent of schools. It's a pleasure to be here with you this evening. What I would like to just begin by saying is this, I do believe it is very important for a town's financial success to be one of which is worked through over the course of an entire fiscal year. With that being said, I will tell you that I have conveyed this in every board and every community that I've worked in, that a school district budget is extremely dynamic. There are ebbs and flows that happen throughout the year. And so as a result of that, what I have done, and I, my oath and promise to you all, as I had mentioned previous when I had come here, is that I will come back to this council and I will report back periodically over the course of the year to let you see and understand the dynamics of that budget so that you can see how in some areas we're doing very, very well and how in other areas that we did not anticipate, we are not doing very well. I have done that with both councils, whether it be by council or by selectmen, but also with town boards of finance. So I take that time to try to be as open and be as up to date with each of you so that it helps in the understanding of what we're faced with. District budgeting has become tremendously challenging. We try to predict the best that we can at the time we put budgets together. I have always tried to work with my boards of education to get budgets over to the town far before the charter would require, and the reason for that is that it fits into a much larger picture. You, as you know, you're looking at how the town is functioning and its expenditures. But on top of it, there's considerations that our boards of finance are doing. We're looking at the revenues coming in. So the sooner we can get that information over, it helps in the creation of the town budget so that we're working together, being able to address where there might be some certain shortfalls or areas we have overextended. But in doing so, the Board of Education budgets or begins that process very, very early. Believe it or not, for me, the budgeting process begins the moment that one budget is finalized. You are already beginning to think about the changes or the things that you know are going to need adjustment, and you're making notes with those. Over the next three, over the next three months, I will be working extremely closely with our Board of Education, as well as our business manager and the school administration, taking a look at what are some of those requests that we might want to see, but also where are those areas that we are falling short in that current year? It is those types of ebbs and flows that I will report and bring back to you so that you're able to see it in real time as it's happening. But we are looking to follow a budget schedule this year that helps us get our budget together as early as November and then finalizing it over the months of November and December, being therefore able to be workshopped with the Board of Education in the month of January, as well as with February. But with that, giving indications to you all how we're doing and looking at that next fiscal year. So tonight, what we'd like to do is bring some closure to this previous fiscal year. Although I will say to you that I was not a part of the outcome, I recognize and respect the challenges that you were faced with as a town when the budget came in over budget for the Board of Education. This is not, East Hampton was not an anomaly across the state of Connecticut. And I think there has been messaging surrounding or the narrative that went to it was explained. But I want to reiterate to you all that we in school districts continue to struggle tremendously with special education funding. Because a singular student, when you are talking about a thirty-seven million dollar budget and perhaps a hundred and fifty to a hundred, two-hundred thousand dollar outplacement, you are well within a percentage of a point of what your budget at three hundred and seventy thousand, three hundred and seventy thousand dollars would be. So one single student could have a significant impact on that. And the hard thing is that we can't come to you all and we can't go to the Board of Finance or just stand in front of a microphone and be able to speak about that specific circumstance because it's all protected through FERPA. But what I can say to you is that there isn't a circumstance that gets to those levels that the districts, that the district, and I will pledge to you, it also be my objective, that the district hasn't gone through many efforts to try to meet the needs of that student in a way where we are trying to meet the service needs of the students, perhaps even doing it in-house before outplacements are even considered. By the time you reach to a degree of an outplacement that could perhaps cost fifty thousand, it could cost two hundred thousand. I have had those that have exceeded four hundred thousand dollars. When you reach those levels, there are reasons why that's happening, and perhaps it may be what's in the best interest of that student based on the programming that they need, but it's just not easily explained. But throughout a year where we are trying to address that is where you begin to see big shifts. And in the most of your districts across the state, the area last year and the area the year before and prior to that had been in the realms of special education. And it had to do with both the cost of tuitions for outplacements, but also the transportation that coincides with that. But please understand, your board has a representative council, meaning that anytime we get into these circumstances, legal councils are a part of it. We're not just making decisions in isolation because we believe it's the right thing to do. We're doing it in a way that we are getting the support that we're doing. What is that? The recommendation of council to get to that point. So I just wanted to preface that. Your number last year was high, but it was in those areas. Business manager Acetta will highlight that with you, and in the previous year, it was that. But I will, as I said, I'll share more with you about that in the upcoming year as we, as we go through the budget cycle. So with that, I'll let you speak to the current budget.
Thank you, Tim. Well, yeah, again, it's, we ended up where we more or less thought we would all, all along and within just under what we had last said in, in April, but still more than we had said in September and December. But of the roughly eight hundred thousand that we have overspent, over seven hundred thousand of it is directly related to special education situations. And, and as Tim said, the number of students involved is, is really small. And that the, when we had three students that we had anticipated would age out, which, which they did over the course of last year, and then we've had additional expenses, maybe not necessarily so many more students as, as more costly challenges in, in their situation or, or transportation to, to get them where they're going. So, you know, that's a it's, it's a significant issue. And we, so we ended up with about, with fourteen people outplaced at the end of the year with the ones aging out. We've added a few and so that we're, we also had one leave our, our area. So at, at the start of this year, at this point, we're at fifteen outplacements. The other areas, we had some improvements in the utilities, electricity and natural but we also had more employees take our health insurance. It's just like our, our outplacements. We have always budgeted for the same level of health insurance enrollments and, and so that we had, had a few more come on or, or switches within their lives from individuals to married or with children. So that's where we stand now.
Karen, with regard to the fifteen students you had, was that budgeted?
Uh, we not completely, no, because we were at a level of around eleven, twelve with the ones that had aged out. But then we had more that came on at the end of the year. And, you know, I think we'll go into that showing what we had said and, you know, that we had provided to the, the community a chance for increasing special ed by three students, which would have been a whole nother percent on our budget. Another almost four hundred thousand to, to try to adjust for that.
Well, if that's the case, is the likelihood we're going to see an overrun when we get to January, February, March?
I, I think there's a strong possibility for the very same reasons again. We're, we're still, we don't have all of our contracts.
Yeah, I think it's, so, you know, and it's difficult because I'm, I'm coming into this in my first year here with you trying to go through an entire budget cycle as I'm explaining how or where there was perhaps an underfunding of that particular line. So as I would recommend, and I will continue with this recommendation to a board of education, the question that Mr. Markham has asked is relevant to, is very relevant in the budget creation process. We have always, and I have always budgeted based on the student population that exists as outplacements at the time we're doing the budgeting. There are some that might be able to say or to argue that, you know what, we know that year over year, there seems to be an additional one or two. Your historicals in this district, and I had them before I came here, your historicals, and I'll just give the past five years. Right now, we're saying four, fifteen, but this is a fifteenth as of this week. It was fourteen. Thirteen were last year, twelve were the year before, eight were the year before. We've got it going all the way back to two thousand and eight. Your numbers have been pretty constant over the past, over ten years in this district relevant to outplacements. Your numbers of students that are identified have increased significantly. However, your outplace numbers have remained pretty constant. So in this particular case, I would be recommending in the budget deliberation cycle that's pending, that you're going to budget based on those students that we know. And then as it, as the year progresses, if by the time we have an opportunity to adjust based on what was originally shared with the Board of Finance, as well as town council, before a budget gets moved forward to referendum, if there's an opportunity to adjust, that would be a consideration that we could, the town could bank at that time because we might know that there may be more, there may be less. However, a determination would need to be made before it gets set and voted on. But once you've reached that point, you're really at the mercy of really what ends up happening with students. I'm going to tell you that of the fifteen students that are in here right now, two of these students had nothing to do with placements by the East Hampton Public Schools. These were placed by an alternate agency. We happen to just be considered the nexus for these students. But these were not East Hampton students where we were any part of any decision-making, and sometimes that happens where there'll be these placements by the state. So we will budget on the students that are certainly known to us. And then if adjustments happen over the course of the year before that budget is finalized, we'll readjust accordingly. And then that's why I think it's so important to keep you all informed as to how this is going up and down. This is the area that everybody seems to struggle with within our communities where we just didn't see it or plan for it. So the second part to the question, Mr. Markham, was that is there the potential that there might be a change like to the number? Like, could it go higher than that? So here we are, we are now in the second week of the school year, knowing that we have an alpha of at least two that are in this based on where we budgeted to where we currently are. But yet, over the course of this year, we might lose a student that was an outplacement. So it's really hard to say if it's just going to automatically be an overage because we may have some movement otherwise where our objective and our goal is always with our students who are outplaced is can we perhaps develop a program that meets their needs in district? For some students, you can. For many students, that's just not a possibility. However, we would try to do that. I think every parent's goal in a school district's goal is to be able to provide a, a free and a public, appropriate public education that's a good education to all students. But in some cases, an outplacement may be what's in their best interest. But that's after a lot of discussions and conversations. So we may see some students that now come back to the district based on some of the great programs that you as a town have funded in this district. So they may not remain out all year and they could come back. And therefore then we have a delta that then makes up for the difference of others. Those are just by numbers of students, the costs associated. That's a whole different topic that we could talk about. Yesterday, and I'd be happy to share it with you all. I shared it with the Board of Education this morning. We have, the, the State Department of Education has known this to be a big issue. Our legislature has known this to be a huge issue. They have, they have requested that a task force do a full study on the funding mechanism relevant to special education. That report and its initial findings were just released. I received copy of it yesterday. I forwarded to the board. I'd be happy to send it to you all as well. It's just, it's good information. It didn't get to as many of the solutions that I hope that they would bring in the findings. And it lacked some citations, which academically, that's a, an issue for me. But the reality being is that we know it's being talked about. They know we have a funding issue for special ed in this district, in the state of Connecticut, and we've got to figure out a solution to all of this. So I apologize for the undue stress it causes on you, the Board of Finance, the town, the board, you know, as far as the stress associated with it, but it does occur everywhere where it's just up and down and it's really hard to predict.
Okay. Other questions? Yeah, please.
If I may, in the, in our package as well as a, is a memo, this one-page memo, which sort of discusses a little bit more in depth the effect of this law, the Connecticut Public Act twenty-three, one thirty-seven, and its effect on this past year's budget. And I wonder if you could just clarify that verbally for everybody here. And in fact, what the result of a, a mandate at the last minute to just extend the special ed services, how much that really costs this town in this particular budget we're looking at? Just, just for edification on what we're talking about.
I don't have the exact number. Yes, I got it. I don't have the, I don't have the exact number with me, but it did involve three students, one of which was our most costly one. And so it's, it's in the range of at least half of the entire special ed problem. And that would be a one-time change unless they add another year to the, the, the time. But it was, so that was just a one-time impact.
Sure. So, so what are we saying? We're saying what the law said is that the, these students on outplacement, they age out during the course of the year, and that's how you budgeted. But at the last minute and a week or two before this budget even began, they said, well, no, now we have to push the aging out to the end of the school year. That was for three students? And that, in fact, cost the town four hundred thousand?
Sure.
What, I, I guess why I bring this up is, is to really amplify what, what the state is not doing for us. And as you say, it's, it's not just our town. It's, it's other towns and municipalities. That's why these, and, and I guess you could refer to this as an unfunded mandate. I mean, it's what falls right into that, that picture. And this is a serious issue, and that's just special ed for crying out loud. That has nothing to do with your regular educational cost share, which has been stagnant or has gone down for the last six to eight years. Major problem, major problem in Connecticut.
I would also add to that. It's not a one-time cost. It's every year, students who would have aged out now have to be extended into the budget. It increases the, the total expense.
Is, is there, due to this law, is there actually any change in the education of these students?
What we're referring to are students receiving transition programming. So the, the, the program itself is just offered for an extended period of time. So the programming in, in a good transition program is going to adapt as the students are showing more skills or making up for deficits of skills so that they could be more successful. So there might be some programming shifts, but in all likelihood, it's a carry forward of that transition program that was developed through a process of a team that worked toward a plan that could move that student post-graduation to an outcome where they would then be able to age out of a program and we could feel comfortable, family, district, that we had provided them the type of programming that the best we could to help them be successful in life. So you don't see a lot of changes in that program. And there is a high degree of variability in what those transition services-type programs look like from community to community, program to program. I wish I could speak more intelligently to you all about what program we are utilizing within district for transition-type programming. And we could certainly have our director of special service come and speak more in regards to that. But I think it just, it does get to the larger issue of how are districts funded for these new mandates? Where is our ability to look at situations in a case-by-case basis and make a determination that we feel might be appropriate? Perhaps somebody could age out sooner. We did, you know, that we believe very strongly that they may have been in a circumstance where we, they've met the goals and standards that we had in place. You know, I think the, 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 by making the decision the way that they did, it's almost as if they believe school districts are just looking to move students out of these programs and age them out. And that's not the case. That's not the whole point of this program. It's to do everything we can to get them prepared for life beyond that program. So it's unfortunate, you know, I've always believed that working together is going to get to a better outcome. And, and, and certainly I think that the funding is going to be really the ba, it's going to be the key conversation that needs to be addressed so that now we're, we're not compromising the quality of programming for students as we're trying to determine the best way to fund it. There are, there are brilliant minds that are out there that can come up with some good ideas. And, and, and I hope we get there sooner than later.
Thank you. I, I hope they look to these brilliant minds here because I think they could solve it.
I believe that to be true.
Karen, do you have any questions? Deb, do you have any?
No.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item five B, presentation by the Conservation Lake Commission regarding hydralaya.
Okay. Okay. All right. That wasn't at the beginning there. That was kind of towards the end.
Trying to move you along.
Okay, can we get up? That's get up, keep going. I've only got fifteen slides. I promise. We'll get through this fairly. We'll get through this fairly quickly. But anyway, I want to talk to you about, thank you first of all for having me. And I've got three topics that I basically am going to talk to you about and plus answer any questions, whatnot you may have. So the first act is what we've done in two thousand twenty-four. The second item is the hydrola infestation and treatment. And then watershed, just I'm going to touch briefly on the watershed projects that we've done to reduce phosphorus runoff into the lake. Basically, a report for two thousand twenty-four is pretty positive. The aeration started in April. We put in a product called Aqua Flux, which is a phosphate absorbing, or phosphate attracting material. It drops phosphate into the soil as opposed to letting it run into the lake. That's installed in five streams that come into the lake. So that's reducing the inflow of phosphates into the water. The bioblast, which is the biogenic, biologic material that's put in to the lake for the last couple of years, helps absorb and diffuse phosphates. That was converted from a dump it in the lake every couple, three or four times a year to a constant, continuous feed program. So we added tanks onto the aeration systems. And now the bioblast material is fed it controlled amounts into the lake. So it results, results in having to lose, use less material. It's better because it's a constant flow. It balances out the content of the lake. So we're, we've got that project completed and that's, that seems to be working out very well. We did a Metaphloc treatment. Metaphloc is a treatment we've done last year and then this year, mid-August. And that is an absorption of, that basically is a product that absorbs phosphate and drops it to the bottom, bottom of the lake, helps with the clarity in the lake. We've issued a number of Lake Smart Awards. We've done total of twenty-one of these since two thousand twenty-two. And their property owners who work with us to adjust, make changes to their property in terms of runoff and whatnot to reduce phosphates. And if we have ten criteria that we'll ask people to meet and make changes, grading, plantings, could be any number of things to help meet the requirements. And then if they do, they get this Lake Smart Award. So you start to see some of them around the lake on various properties. Okay, so that's pretty much the good news. After this, it's going to get bad and I'm going to start talking about money. The bad news is obviously we've got a serious infestation of hydrola. And it's, hydrola, if you don't know, is a rapidly growing, like, can you advance me one? There we go. Okay. A rapidly growing invasive plant. It was introduced into the United States in about, about forty years ago, they say. And it came originally, it was used as a decorative thing in aquariums. Looks pretty when you first grow it and it, it makes very nice. Well, some point, somebody dumped their, their aquarium into a river pond or something. It's now over a very large, most of the states on the eastern seaboard and across the south, southland have hydrola. It started and it's gotten worse in the warmer weather in the south. They had very big problems with it in Florida, Texas, along the Gulf Coast. Connecticut wasn't too bad until a couple of years ago, but now it's here. It's very strong in the Connecticut River. If it's left untreated, it will basically turn the lake into a swamp. So I don't mean, sound like I'm crying fire here, but we got fire. Can you advance that? That's just an example I took on the dock. That was about twenty, thirty minutes worth of raking in this particular area. It's, it's nasty stuff and it grows. I've heard it grows an inch a day. I've heard it grows three inches a day. The plant will grow to twenty-five feet long. So it's a lot. Next slide there. That's the best shot I could get of a mat. When the stuff really grows, eventually that's what it, that's what it turns, turns into. Down in, well, and when it gets this strong, what it's doing is it's choking out native good vegetation that's in the, the plant that we need for the fish and, and the wildlife. And actually to be able to use the lake in recreational manner. This, we did a survey last, last year, not last year, actually it was done this spring to say, okay, how much do we have? And each of those dots is a physical sampling. GZA, who's our limbologist, contracted limbologist, went around the lake and pulled samples. Each of those dots represented the place where they pulled hydrola from. Next slide. This is basically the heat, it's a heat map, they call it, which basically shows you where the white is, that's the heavier infestations. Red is medium and it's left, but it's just another way of measuring, okay, how much hydrola do we have? And the answer is, we have a lot and we have it pretty much everywhere in the lake. They didn't do the sampling in the deeper areas. The plant seems to do better in ten feet of water or less. In the deeper parts, it's, it's not so strong. So go on to, here's the treatments and what we can, what we can do about it. The first way is a chemical treatment. There's a chemical called fluorodyne, which is put in the lake to basically kill the hydrola. It will, it will kill it. It will kill it. It may take a couple of times to do it. The, but it, it does work. We looked very hard to try and find some other things because dumping it, we're not fans of really dumping more chemicals into the lake. That's kind of in our world, that's a last, last resort. So we found this thing, this recommended solution or a solution called, called strap triploid, triploid grass-eating carp. Now, we have carp in the lake, but they're not grass-eating carp, unfortunately. These are sterile carp. They don't die. But they do live for twenty years. And they not only hydrilla, they eat the regular natural vegetation also. We would have to have, DEP will permit it. We'd have to block off the dam so that we ensure them that these things don't get out and go down downstream. And it's still going to cost a lot of money. The fish, I guess, to buy him is twenty-five dollars a fish. And we don't know exactly how many we'd need, but it's multiple thousands. Then you got to put them in and take care of them. So we looked at that. We're really high on it for a while, but we've kind of moved away from this and we don't see it as a thing. It was done in Lake Candlewood, was very successful in eating hydrola. The problem is they've eaten all the hydrola. Now they're eating everything else and it's killing the fishing and everything. So Candlewood is looking to get rid of them. Dave's suggestion, we should rent the fish from Candlewood for a couple of years and then send them back. We'd like to have him at the meetings. He always comes up with some good ideas. Anyway, another way, thing that will help is lowering the lake. We're working on a project, a program this fall to have Bevins agree to lower the lake, lower than we've ever done it before. We lowered it thirty-seven inches a couple of years ago to build the new ramp, launch ramp at Sears Park. We're looking, we think we can get it down to about forty-five. And just at that point, the water is just below where it can run over the, the dam. That'll expose more property around the shoreline, shallow water. We get a decent freeze this winter, that will help kill the plants that are there. So that'll do it.
Chuck, do they, it kills the plants that are there, but do they just come back again?
There's two types of these things. One calls, has what they call tubers, which picture a mini little potato. That grows and that plant grows from that. The it'll come back. The is, does not have tubers. It just grows from other pieces of the plant or it comes from a, they have another word for it, but it's like a seed. And it's, will be more effective against the seed type. But again, nobody has a lot of experience with this because this Connecticut hydrola we have in the Connecticut River in here is different from all the ones down south. So they think it's going to be, the, the freeze will, will, will hurt it. But I can't stand here and guarantee that.
But just drying it out will
Drying it out, drying it out will help. So the, having the dry shoreline there will help. So we're recommending pursuing that. That's not a, a cost thing. Is it going to cure our whole problem? No, but it'll help.
One other question, by reducing the level of the water, that makes the phosphates or whatever more concentrated? And does it cause more of a problem with the blue-green algae?
I don't think so because at the time we're doing it, blue-green algae is not the, growing or whatnot. So it shouldn't, it shouldn't.
No, the, the water is going over the dam. So the phosphorus concentration stays the same. When you lower
I mean, I got to say, we are winging it a little bit here. I mean, all, in all, full disclosure. What the, what, what lowering it will do, I'm optimistic, is I'm, is a really rough calculation. I think that's going to expose somewhere between five and ten percent of the lake bottom. Because now we're going to have a, like a bathtub ring around the lake. So that's going to, and now with the cold weather and the exposure, that's going to kill some plants. So that's one reason why we think the lower lake level is really highly suggested. That's not, it doesn't cost anything and it's going to help.
So, so what's that going to look like? Let's say in front of Lakeside Restaurant there, would the shoreline then be about three or four hundred feet?
It won't be that far. And again, it depends, in front of my house, because I'm fairly shallow off Spelman Point there, I'm probably going to have thirty feet of beach.
It doubles the size of the island.
Yeah, the island will be bigger. And any place that's, basically any place that's less than four feet of water is going to be showing. So that's, that means there's going to be quite a bit more of the bottom exposed. So am I answering, am I answering your question?
Giving me an understanding.
Okay. The last thing we've, we really have investigated and we've talked about is harvesting the hydrola plants. By harvesting, I'm not talking about, you know, harvesting corn to eat. It's, we're just going to cut out. That's what they have to do down in Chester, the marina down there. There's a marina in Chester that they have guys come in with like hedge trimmers, mowers, and they have to mow their channel every couple, every couple of months, I guess, in order to let the boats get in and out. It's really bad down there. I don't know that that's going to work for us, but what we have come up with is a program called Take a Rake to the Lake, which we're going to be running the program on the twenty-second and we're inviting and asking all the lakeside residents to go out with a rake. You can take a metal rake and just rake this stuff up. So we're going to have a weigh-in. So there's prizes for first, second, third, for the people who bring the most, the most hydrola in. So again, it's a pretty cost-effective thing. Friends of Lake is donating the, the money for the prize. And Sean's been working on a dumpster over there at the lake to take care of it. I believe Matt's supplying the dumpster. So we'll see what happens. And if it's, if it's successful, you know, we can do it more often. Maybe we set up some sort of all-summer-long disposal point so people can bring the stuff. But again, is it going to solve the problem? No, but will it, it'll help? Yes. And is it cost-effective? Yes. So that's where we're at.
And one of the nice things about that is that for the individual whose property it is, it helps protect his property.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, I've been raking in front of my house this summer. I do it about once a month. And it slows it down. It definitely, the first time I did it in the spring, there was a lot. And I think, Jack, you have the same problem, the island there. There isn't as much now, but so if we can get everybody enthusiastic about it and make a little party out of the thing, the prize, I think we'll, we'll get some things. I'm, I'm, I have a personal goal. I'd like to see us get a couple thousand pounds. So I don't know if we'll get to that or not. But, so we're looking at doing those things. But we're still, at the end of the day, we're still going to have to do some sort of treatment about the, about the part of the lake. And so here's where the money thing comes in. Yeah, this is the quote we got from Pond and Lake Connection who does workforce on, and they've done other treatments and whatnot in the lake. And we're talking about a hundred and eleven thousand to do the, to do the lake. That's a one-year thing. Their point is it's probably going to have to have a second treatment the second year and possibly the third. That's all up in the air. But, so that's kind of the number we're looking, and then you've got to add a little bit on to that for monitoring and whatnot. So I put together a little spreadsheet on the next slide there, which the left, the left column is the treatment cost. So I said survey and planning is about thirty thousand. The in-laid treatments at a hundred and eleven, and then we've got about another twenty thousand in costs. So the total cost year one is about a hundred and sixty-one thousand. I'm estimating at year two, seventy-five thousand, and estimating year three at forty thousand. The funding is in the right-hand side there. We've gotten, we've been approved for one state grant, which is forty-seven. Well, the, but the amount is up in the air. It's at least forty-seven thousand.
Could be as much as seventy-five.
It could be as much as seventy-five. We won't know that for sure. So that's why it's got forty to seventy. And that, I believe, is on the edge to accept, to accept it, which I can't believe you're not going to accept money. You never know. We have about forty thousand in our CLC budget and the capital. That isn't the capital side, correct, Dave?
Should be.
Yes. Which we can put towards this. We cut back on one of the, the bio, bioblast treatments this year. We've got some shuffled around some of our other funds. So we've got about forty thousand in the which leaves us a shortfall of somewhere between seventy-four and forty-six thousand, depending on what the state comes through with. Year two, we really don't know whether we can, we'll get another grant from the state. Hydrola is getting a lot of publicity as a really invasive thing. So I suspect there will be some more grants available to get that for year two and, and year three if, if necessary. So I'd be happy to accept a check on the, on the way out.
Don't be signed.
That's a question if I
Yes, absolutely.
But when you boil it all down, the best science that you or anyone really knows of is that we're not going to be able to eradicate it in the lake. In other words, make it go away forever. Is that true? Does that, in other words, is there a science that, that has been, which I say, gone through, that in fact shows that hydrola can be eradicated? If in fact, we don't continue to re-introduce it to the lake? So let's, let's, let's take that out of the picture. We got a bunch of hydrola now. Let's say not another boat goes in the lake. Let's just say that.
Yeah.
These treatments that we're talking about are, are good and they'll, they'll, they'll help diminish it.
Yeah.
But they won't totally kill it in the lake. Is that a fair statement?
No, fluorodyne does kill it.
Okay, it does.
The fluorodyne does kill it.
However, it may kill a lot of other stuff too.
Not, no.
It may or may not.
It may, it doesn't, I can't say that there isn't a, a plant in the bottom of the lake that that will get to. But it's been fairly well-tested over the last years in the south, especially in another place around it. The state of Connecticut has a testing site going in on the Connecticut River for, I'm sorry, that's the Corps of, Army Corps of Engineers has that test site going. So the fluorodyne stuff is fairly documented. It's not a new chemical. It is on the DEP registered list. So they got no problems with it. We, we, in fact, I think it's covered by actually one of our other permits that we do have. But we'd have to just double-check that to be sure. But the information I have is fluorodyne does kill it.
Okay.
Okay. It may take a, a treatment this year and a partial treatment next year and maybe a, even a little treatment in the third. But there is hope that it can be totally
Totally eradicated, if in fact, it's not reintroduced.
Can I make a comment?
Sure.
I think you, you put a condition on that conversation that is challenging. My experience with lakes, and you, some of you'll recall that I spent a dozen years or so working for a community that had a thousand acres of lake. Invasive species, in that case, it was Eurasian milfoil. Invasive species will get knocked back by various treatments. There it was Will get knocked back by various treatments, there it was basically a broadleaf herbicide. But you put a condition on there, if no boat ever went in.
You're right, precisely.
So I will tell you that yes, Chuck is probably correct, that if we were able to eradicate. Uh, or rather eliminate the, your, the hydrilla that we have in the lake. It is nearly impossible for us to prevent any new from getting in. And so, I think what it becomes, and what my experience has been with invasive species in the past. Is that you get to a point where you have small-spot treatments that are going on, just to keep it under control. And they're significantly different cost-wise than an entire lake treatment that we're talking about right now.
Yeah, yeah.
So, I don't want the conversation to end up getting spilted into the community of, three years, it's gone, we're done, yeah!
Well, that's precisely why I, why I asked the question.
Yeah.
Uh, you know, I think we have to be realistic, and really the reason I bring this up, cuz I went to a presentation in Salem. Uh, two weeks ago, and a fellow by the name of, of Bugby, great, Bugby, do you know who he is?
We know, I know he is, he works for GZA, who's our rheumatologist, and he's been involved in our conversations with us.
Exactly, and to be quite honest, he, he went through all of the items that you in fact presented here. But, um, it was very difficult to uh, to pin him down, uh, to uh, actually say, hey, look. Will this approach eliminate it? Will this approach, will the combination of, of uh, approaches eliminate it? So, that, that's really why I wanted to bring up the conversation, to be realistic about. Where this may be headed.
Yeah. Like, that's important, that's a, that's a, yeah, very fair point, so, and. That's why we're kind of in the approach, and a lot of my information came from Bugby, also other research and whatnot, but uh. That's why we're looking, cuz what we're doing is a combination approach.
Right.
You know, I'm trying to balance off stuff, hey, if it'll help, and it's free, or relatively well, that's a no-brainer, let's try it. You know, uh, but I don't think we can limp, I don't think it's wise for us to limp along and just do. You know, rake the lake projects and drain it, uh, cuz all that stuff out in the middle, all the rich it has is just gonna be grown. And, and at the rate this stuff grows, uh, it's, it's gonna come back with a vengeance.
Right, so, thank you, Chuck.
Okay.
What plans do you have for future to curb this with washing stations? Eliminate so many points of entry for watercraft?
We, well, we've already, I mean, we've been on that already, we have uh, the Sears Park attendance trained for washing boats and inspecting.
That's not my concern, my concern is all these private associations. And how do you manage? Or enforce boat uh, cleaning and so forth?
We have given the, the, the uh, the private associate, there's basically five ramps. That I'm aware of, I mean, I'm not counting somebody walking down with their kayak and tossing it off the dock, trailerable. Uh, type things, we've uh, been in touch with all of them. Uh, some of them have taken the signs, and we said, look, we'll provide you with the warnings and the s, the signs, some of them have taken it and putting it up. We really have no way of enforcing it, other than the fact, you know, these folks are interested in their waterfront, they really don't want a map. Of hydrilla there, so they're willing, we've got good cooperation out of them, I, I, I don't think they're gonna intentionally be. You know, trying to evade the, uh, the thing, but, but the straight answer to your question is, well, we really have no ability to enforce that.
Right. To reintroduce it.
Yeah. But as Dave says, I think if we, if we can get it under control and then do spot, uh, great, and then if you wanna go to the uh. Last page uh, on there, I have a, it says Conservation Lake Commission Vision. And I'd just like to read that, cuz this is kind of important. In alignment with surrounding development, we want to reme, remediate and manage the Lake Pokapag to stabilize, enhance, and protect its future for our community. We will achieve this by restoring the lake's health and natural balance through watershed improvements targeted in lake interventions. And the restoration of native plant habitats, and that last line is a key thing. If we can get this hydrilla out of control, we've gotta get more programs that has reestablished the native plants that are good for the lake. Out there, so, that's the next step, is we can beat this down, we've gotta go at trying to improve. The, the habitat and the lake, the plants that are already in there, and I raise, I say that Deb because it kind of relates to. What you're saying, it's like, do I have a exact plan layout for you right here, right now? No, I don't. But this is what we're working uh, towards on that.
Okay, good, is there a plan for notifying everyone that needs to be notified about the lowering of the lake level? Cuz I know many years ago, you know, it got lowered unintentionally, or some people weren't told, and everybody was upset. We obviously don't want that to happen.
Yes, we're, uh, I've got a meeting being set up with Bevins who control the dam. And uh, we've been playing very night, everything's been, been good. Uh, and we'll, we'll, we will definitely, right now, the plan is, we wanna open it a little bit to get it down somewhat for this rake the lake program. Cuz the farther people can get out, the more they can rake, uh, but they won't start, the dam won't open seriously till after Columbus Day. So I think that's the fifteenth of October, and yes, we will put note, we have notification, we did that last year, and I think the year before. To notify when the lake is going down to give people ample time to get it, get their boats out and whatnot. And we're gonna mention, emphasize it this year, cuz it's gonna be, it's gonna be low, if they wait until the first of December. Uh, it's gonna be really hard to get a boat on a, on a trailer over at that ramp, cuz it's gonna be low. I mean, last time around, it lowered at thirty-seven inches, and I found rocks that I never knew were in this lake. So, they come up like teeth out of the, as the water level goes down.
Chuck, has the thirty thousand for survey and plan been spent, or is that anticipated to be spent?
We have not received a bill on that yet.
Some of it has been spent.
Something like that, yeah, we haven't gotten a complete billing on that yet, but, but we have spent some of the money on this, on that, those initial two surveys. Uh, so. I mean, I just tried to give you a picture where we are with the, with the budget, so uh, but uh. We can't really do anything for this treatment until spring, uh. It has to be applied when the stuff is active and growing, so that means June. At the, yeah, June for it, so we've got some time to massage this around a little bit on the uh. The budget, and I'm gonna leave that part today.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Agenda item six, bids and contracts.
You have no bids or contracts, I see.
Thank you. Agenda item seven, resolutions, ordinances, policies, proclamations. A resolution to accept a grant from Connecticut Deep for aquatic invasive species.
Uh, as Mr. Yankner alluded to, uh, the town received notice uh, earlier this year that it had received. An aquatic invasive species grant to assist us in addressing hydrilla uh, in the lake. Uh, as he also alluded to, we're in the contract phase of that discussion right now with uh, the state and. Uh, we anticipate receiving not less than forty-seven thousand and change, uh, and perhaps as much as seventy-five thousand. Uh, depending on uh, how the state handles, I guess, the distributions at the end. Uh, so, uh, the council is asked to adopt what has become a fairly standard resolution for the state. Uh, indicating that you will accept the grant and that you assign. Uh, I'm sure it's me, the town manager, to execute contracts and other documents uh, to facilitate the grant.
I'll move that resolution.
Motion to move the resolution, is there a second? Are there any questions?
Yeah, Dave, on, on this grant, where, where did the grant initiate? In other words, did we just say, hey, look, we've got a hydrilla. Problem, and we think we, we can spend X or do this, and DEP, will you give us some money? Did we sort of originate that?
Well, we, uh, it's not quite as casual as you imply, but uh, yes. The, the staff in the Recreation Department made an application with the Conservation Lake Commission. Uh, to the state under the aquatic invasive species program, that, that's an ongoing program.
All right.
That the state has for addressing a myriad of invasive species in lakes.
I see.
Uh, and so, we made that application with hydrilla as the focus, because as you'll recall. Uh, while it's been in the lake for a little year, uh, a little bit uh, now already, uh, it really became a focus in the last uh. In the last year or so.
Yeah.
Uh, so, we made the application, and now that we have uh, an award, uh, we just need confirmation that we'll move ahead.
I, I see, I see, does the state rely on our judgment as far as how we wanted to um, treat the lake?
At the time, we anticipated that we'd be able to do, I, I guess the short answer to that is yes, to some degree. Uh, at the time, we anticipated that we'd be able to do a partial treatment, which is, I think, the basis of the original grant application. Obviously, we've learned more now that we've done a more detailed survey.
Yeah.
At this point, but, and that perhaps is why there's a fluctuation at the state in terms of how much they're gonna give us, but.
Yeah, yeah.
We had applied for the full amount.
Yeah.
And for whatever reason, they, four thou, forty-seven thousand three hundred and sixty-two or something like that is what they gave us.
Okay, thanks.
I might add, uh, if I may, uh, as we look into the future about this and, and talk about. How we fund this, um, it'll be important, it, it may be an important piece of the discussion when we get into discussing. Uh, what happens to the town surplus, as I mentioned in my, in my memo. The other thing I'll mention, uh, is that Sean Mullin and I, the Recreation Director and I, have been uh, continuing to communicate. Through the River Cog with the Army Corps of Engineers. Uh, and trying to use that as a potential opportunity for some additional support, either technical support or frankly. Services in kind or financial support as well, because the Army Corps of Engineers is working. Uh, in the Connecticut River and has recently expanded its discussion and its focus to the Connecticut River Basin. Uh, so, clearly, we're in the Connecticut River watershed basin, uh, and uh, not only is East Hampton, but East Tatum is. Is working with them to try and see if there's assistance there as well, so. Uh, I think Chuck alluded to the concept of looking at what other potential grants are out there, uh, that's one source we're looking at as well.
Any other questions? We'll take a vote, those in favor of accepting or adopting the resolution, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, eyes have it, resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Agenda item eight, continued business, A, subcommittee, committee reports and updates. We have any?
I'll do a very brief one on the Field Use Committee, we did meet last week and discussed. Situating all of the sports teams in towns and all of the fields, which is crazy. Like, we have a lot of kids playing sports and we don't have a ton of fields, so. Um, we've been talking about some alternate possibilities and locations where fields might exist, so. We will keep that discussion moving forward and bring it to the council when appropriate.
Thank you. Chuck?
Water Committee is meeting tomorrow.
Short report.
Well, um, we're actively pursuing additional sources of water, and we're very hopeful. That we can get additional sources of water and, and have a plan for water for East Hampton. Uh, the other thing, the Clean Energy Task Force is having an EV car show on October fifth. In uh, in the center of town, to be exciting.
Anyone else? Moving on. Agenda item eight B, follow-up discussion regarding speed and pedestrian issues.
Um, I'm gonna invite uh, Keith Westner and, and Public Works Director Matt Walsh to come up and follow up on this a little bit. Uh, the council will recall that uh, earlier this year, we had a discussion uh, regarding uh, really primarily about speed on Lake Drive. Uh, and really, it's speed mixed with pedestrians, so, as I committed to you at that evening, we would. I told you that staff would spend some time looking not only at Lake Drive, but other areas of the town. Where uh, we have concentrations of pedestrians uh, mixed with vehicles. Uh, we know speeding is an issue everywhere, literally everywhere, um, and uh, so we. Matt and Dennis and I, mostly Matt and Dennis, took. Some time to look at those options, or rather, look at what options we might have uh, in a couple of areas. I think the conversation will focus primarily on Lake Drive, but some of the potential solutions that we'll talk about. Uh, could extend to other areas of the town, Smith Street in the area of Memorial School. Not Main Street, they'll talk about Lake Street, but it's, or Lake Drive rather, but they'll be talking in context of basically Lake Drive all the way down. And Main Street all the way down to Route sixty-six, so various locations like that, I think we had a little bit of a conversation even about. Over by uh, the middle school and, and things like that, so. Uh, they're gonna spend some time talking about these things, we'll, at the end, talk alluded about some options, both some things that. Uh, the staff are doing sort of as a matter of course, and then perhaps. Uh, there'll be an opportunity for the council to voice its opinion on what things they would like us to pursue. So, I turn it over to, I think primarily Dennis, uh, the chief, uh, to kind of run you through the presentation.
Last slide, you go to the front.
That's the end of all.
I know.
So as the town manager indicated, uh, Matt and I spent some time a couple weeks ago, driving around town on a nice sunny day. Looking at not only Lake Drive, which we're gonna kind of focus on, but we looked at what we call, started to call. The pedestrian corridor, which is Lake Drive down into the center of town, up around the high school. Um, down by the, the middle school, centering down the center school area, all the way down up to Main Street. And then we went up Edgerton and then Smith Street, uh, for where there are sidewalks there. Where predominantly, most of the sidewalks exist. Um, and that's what we kind of focused on as we go and present to you and get some of the things, we have an idea. Uh, of how to improve some of the areas there, but unfortunately, some of them do cost some money, so. Uh, again, uh, next slide, please. So, we actually looked at, again, like I said before, Lake Drive's focusing on from Spelman Point Road to Route sixty-six. Believe it or not, there's fourteen crosswalks, uh, there's several different types of sop, uh, sa, sidewalks, we'll talk about. Several sidewalks are not ADA compliant, uh, one croc, uh, crosswalk is missing appropriate signage. And one crosswalk, in Matt and I's opinion, should be removed, uh, which we tried last year. And uh, we got quite a bit of pushback when they did the paving project.
Yeah, it's a few years ago.
Was it?
Yeah.
Couple years ago. Since two thousand eighteen, only one person thankfully has been uh, struck in the crosswalk, and that was in Hills Ave. Um, and that was during the fireworks display that the uh, volunteer fire department was putting on. Had nothing to do with the uh, crosswalk, it had everything to do with an inint, inintensive young driver. Drinking a cafe latte and texting at the same time with three other people in the car. Fortunately, the girl that was hit was not seriously injured. As the town manager alluded to, uh, speed is definitely an issue, uh, but sometimes it's not as bad as reported. What we did look at is how much traffic is actually traveling on Lake Drive on any given day. And on average, in one direction, and in this case, the average was northbound. There's about eleven hundred and seventy-six vehicles that travel by Lake Drive a day. Um, not an insignificant amount, there's quite a bit of traffic on there, um, next slide, please. What we also looked at is, ironically, before Matt and I looked at this, I actually uh, attended a pedestrian safety class that was uh. Taught by two individuals, one from Georgia and one from Washington State. They were from the Federal Highway Traffic Safety Administration.
They were from the Federal Highway Traffic Safety Administration and they specifically came out to talk about crosswalks, uh pedestrian safety. And they gave this nice nifty chart that basically says what you should do, can do, and are required to do on certain crosswalks. And when we look at Lake Drive, we're primarily dealing with at thirty or below. And without going through it, it talks about two lanes, what you can do, uh rapid flashing beacons, curb extensions, pedestrian refuge areas, uh road diets, um different forms of high visibility uh signage uh that you can do. So Matt and I used this chart as we went through specifically our fourteen crosswalks, but also thinking bigger picture, the entire town of East Hampton. Next slide, please. As we went through the uh intersections and the crosswalks, we, I kind of drove down and took some pictures and this is actually going from Spelman Point going around toward sixty-six. And you see, we do have good quality signage. Uh you know, they're they're fluorescent. Uh we have warnings ahead, but you also see that further down, there is a sidewalk uh delineated by a crosswalk sign, but there's some foliage that needs to be trimmed. So that's one of the things that we immediately picked up on, where we need to do a little tree trimming. We are gonna run into probably a little bit of problems because some of the trees are not owned by the town, but we have the ability to trim the.
Yeah, we'll do sort of like the tunnel here.
Tunnel.
Selective pruning.
Yeah. Next slide, please. Um and this is actually, when you get closer, you actually do see this the sign, which is depicted, you know, obviously, it's a nice bright white painted crosswalk. But what you do see is the crosswalk goes into someone's front yard. It's not owned by the town, um which uh can sometimes be problematic. Next slide, please. This is another uh crosswalk that was recently painted by D P W uh red uh and uh outlined by nice white letters. From the standpoint of this crosswalk, it draws your attention. It's it's very clean, it's proper signage. But again, you see this crosswalk actually goes into Lakewood Road, right into the street. It's not basically going into a curbed area like like is across the way. Again, we talk about ADA compliant. This ramp is not ADA compliant. A wheelchair has to be able to go up there, have a certain amount of feet on both sides, like a refuge, before they decide which way they're gonna go. Next slide, please. Again, this is another example. This one actually goes into a catch base in the sidewalk, but again, it's it's very visible. Um again, we have ADA issues, uh but we do have proper signage. Next slide, please. This is the crosswalk that Matt and I were talking about that uh goes into basically a grassy area and up to some steps and actually uh serves basically only several residents that live up in that area. If you look on the other side, uh going towards the lake, there is no ramp for people to get up on. One thing that we do have is um and I don't have a pointer, it wouldn't work because you're looking at different ones. But basically up there, you see yield here to pedestrian sign. It's a white sign. Oh, thank you. Um that 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 sign is a great sign, but along with that sign, there's supposed to be shark's teeth painted on the road. So there's a spot that delineates, you need to stop here. So it's just another example of how we need to clear up some of these signages. Uh next slide, please. This is probably our premier example of what we're looking at for a crosswalk. Um. We are looking at the uh thermoplastic type of sidewalk, which is actually basically your asphalt with a plastic and red material basically heated up and pressed into the sidewalk. The benefit of this, it sounds like a rumble strip when you go across. So when we talk about, you know, traffic calming and stuff like that, this actually gives the impression you're running over something, which one would hope would slow traffic down. This actually has the shark's teeth on it. Um it has the good signage. Um the downside is not really ADA compliant on either side. But we have several of these crosswalks already installed, but the issues are, they're expensive to do.
Um how much are they a foot?
Uh about thirty-six dollars a squared foot. Yeah, so it's about seventy-two hundred dollars per crosswalk.
Wow.
So everything, as you've heard tonight, comes with a cost, but uh.
How long do they last?
That's the one nice thing, is that they are permanent. Basically, they will last until we have to repaint the road. So that is one very good thing.
Because they're literally melted into the to the asphalt.
My lifetime.
Yeah, so. Next slide, please. This is just another view of it. Um this is probably one of our more heavily heavily traveled sidewalks. Um two years ago, we had a complaint from a resident that people were blowing through the stop sign. So we actually uh had a police officer, uh our female police officer, uh get dressed up in plain clothes and try to cross the crosswalk. In the short term, like less than thirty minutes, we stopped fifteen cars. So there is definitely an issue uh with people not obeying the stop block, stop signs and everything, and the crosswalk signs. Next slide, please.
Is there additional sign or is is this the stop sign?
Uh crosswalk signs. I'm, I was speaking in general terms, obeying stop signs and crosswalk signs. Sorry about that. Um and this is just another example of, this actually has a missing crosswalk sign and this one goes actually into the the wall around Lakeside, which is, it's kind of confusing for putting a crosswalk into a brick wall, which is kind of unique. So again, next uh slide, please. So what do we do? Uh Matt and I is driving around, we're like, you know, how can we fix these to make them more safe? And what we've talked about before, the rectangular rapid flash beacons, if you recall, uh I mentioned to council um that we applied for a grant to get some of these R R F Bs. Uh we applied, I applied for three and we are the recipient of one, which is actually gonna go at Cranberry Bog, the Smith Street Crossing, which uh is a a prime place for that. Downside is, we've been waiting for two years and the training I went to, I asked the uh state DOT worker there, when can I inspect it? And he basically just turned away and carried on his conversation. But could be utilized at very strategic locations within that pedestrian corridor we're talking about, not just on Lake Drive, to enhance crosswalk safety at high-volume crossing areas and crossings with poor sight lines like we have on Smith Street. Um these units have optional L E D systems, which actually will light up the crosswalk. Uh seventy-plus percent of all crosswalk injuries occur at night. Lake Drive, some of the crosswalks are illuminated, but not all of them. Next slide, please. A lot of the cases, these are not required uh because of the accident history and traffic volume, but we can justify them through an engineering judgment and other roadway safety factors. The cost is a little bit less than what I previously reported to council when we talked about these. They're about fifteen thousand dollars per crosswalk. The issue with these devices is once they get installed, we own them and we have to repair them. Um so I and Matt really don't know how long they would last until we have to start repairing them. But when they get to that point, uh someone's gonna have to be trained to work on it. Seeking grant funding is obviously an option, uh and something that we will be seeking. Uh but some of the possible locations for these uh flashing beacons would be Raymond Road and Lake Drive, West Street and Lake Drive, Smith Street and Edgerton, uh which is up there by where the school is, which gets a lot of traffic and as well as what we've already said, that we're gonna get one is at the Smith Street Crossing for the airline trail. Next one, please. So this is what it would look like when it's installed. Um you know, it would uh, you see the uh L E D ble- uh lights, you know, uh shining down onto the crosswalk, so you you get that. You also see the raised bumps uh used for the line, so they can indicate where the crosswalk starts and ends. And then you have your Isle of Refuge once you come up, so it's it's ADA compliant all the way across.
So this is an example of what ideally we would like to have, is that what that is?
Right, at certain locations.
Yeah.
Certain location. Not at all fourteen, but it's certainly at certain location. I don't believe the fourteen thousand dollars includes the actual marking of the sidewalk.
No, no. So the fourteen thousand or fifteen thousand is simply for the R F B posts for facing each direction. So if you wanted to look into doing also, you know, the thermoplastic treatment, you know, that's on top, that's over your like twenty-two thousand dollar. Um oh, it adds up quick.
Yeah, I guess. It's a great looking cross.
It is great.
Beautiful. The other nice thing about this is the ones we're looking at are solar, so we wouldn't have to hook them up to electricity.
Ah, but there's different, a targeted location where you have a sight distance, you have other factors that, you know, this will, the driver is better.
And these illuminate when you press the button. They're not illuminated all the time.
Correct.
Correct.
Okay.
In fact, the button is the most thing that uh malfunctions the most on these, that we would have to train people to repair.
Next slide, please. So this is just kind of what uh, you know, and a view of what the pole actually looks like, how how it's gonna stick out. It's really not that ugly, so to speak, uh as you saw in the previous picture. Uh next slide, please. So with along the options, we talked about the beacons. One thing we looked at is standardizing the crosswalks in that pedestrian corridor. Do upgrades to some of the surface treatment like that thermoplastic that we talked about and the paint. D P W has already done a great job this summer of repainting a lot of the crosswalks. Some of the crosswalks that would need a little T L C that he got from. Next slide, please. And again, this is the, you know, the the shark's teeth we're talking about, the pre-warning signs, the crosswalk signs. Uh and that's kind of like the vision.
Again, not ADA compliant.
Not ADA compliant.
Correct.
And a lot of these would be difficult to make ADA compliant because on this particular one, we think the town owns some easement on the condo side, but on a lot of the places.
Yeah, very little right way.
It's right up.
Beyond the edge of pavement on, there'll be the left side going down. Um cause not sure on this, but when they put the sidewalks in, uh my understanding is that they kind of shove the road over some and there was not a taking, but basically right up against the right way on the other side. So basically, we only own to the edge of pavement on that side of Lake Drive, in most cases. So that complicates the matter.
Hmm. This is kind of a a blown-up view of that 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 uh surface that we're looking for. And again, if if you driven by it, you will actually feel that like brick motion. And anything, quite frankly, we can do to slow cars down on Lake Drive is is worth it.
Yeah, I believe those were actually installed in uh twenty twenty. So if you look at them, they're still a pretty nice shape.
If we go back to the previous slide, it's.
Yes, slide please. Oh, there it is, yes.
Why do we have the crosswalk thing?
That's a great question.
So one of the reasons why is number one, use, uh as people said before, is if you move it too far down, Clark Hill is unique. As you come down Clark Hill, it's not controlled by a stop sign, it's controlled by a yield sign.
Right.
Um and and again, and and Matt and I have talked about this, a lot of our intersections in town, this one being one, the other one being um uh farther down Lake Drive. Um White Birch.
Oh, White Birch is very.
Where you have that very wide, you know, the goal would be is to tee off those intersections
Right.
and not make them so wide, so people get this tendency to, you know, swing wide. And you, a lot of times, you come up with sightline issues, not so much here, but definitely on White Birch. So that's why they didn't move that intersection, because it would just be very difficult for people to attempt to cross when they're so close to that huge radius turn.
This one seems odd because it looks like you're walking right into a sign post.
Uh the sign is post is, it's a little deceiving. You don't actually walk in. Yeah, on the other side, yeah.
It's alright, okay.
Yeah. But a lot of people do use this prospect. Uh go back to river. One more. So rectify some signing issues or add additional signage. Uh we noticed that there is not that many, as an example, uh speed limit signs. I believe there's three in one direction and three in the other. So Matt and I are gonna look at placing additional speed limit signs at different locations on Lake Drive, as well as other areas in town, to make sure that we're reinforcing the actual speed, uh especially in high-travel areas. Next slide, please. One of the things that we came up with was the slope pedestrian traffic sign. Uh you could put that up in high-traffic areas where you start to go down Lake Drive. You put that sign up, kind of like an additional warning, you know, high-traffic area pedestrians, please slow down. These are some signs that we could absorb in our current budget and they really don't care, carry a price that would impact our current budget. We have to be careful about over-signage, sign pollution. We don't want multiple signs so people get confused. Next slide. These are kind of unique. A lot of towns use these. They're actually um on very large, heavy plastic uh bases. They go right on the W L lines and if they get struck, they just go down and pop back up. Uh they're somewhere in the neighborhood of like four hundred dollars.
They're five hundred fifty dollars.
He's my money man, so in case you haven't noticed it. But five hundred fifty bucks, you know, we would, we would put them out and we would pull them back in, you know, before winter comes.
Yes, send them out like, you know, Memorial Day weekend, take them back after Labor Day, something like that. And and, you know, place them in strategic locations, or you wouldn't want them at every single crosswalk along the lake. But they do serve as a physical barrier to actually slow cars down. Um cause people, even though they pop, certainly don't want to hit it with your car.
And the nice thing is they can be moved if we have a special event. So like if we have Old Home Day, we could take those, move them down into the center of town.
Yeah.
We have high school graduation, we have fireworks, we can pick them up and move them down to my stop and chat.
How many of those are you talking?
So initially, I'm thinking, why don't we buy like maybe three or four of them and just try them for next spring? We'll put them out there, see if they, if they're effective, or if they get hit every week, right? That would be the other thing if, you know. I don't want to replace them every month, you know. If they seem, you know, reasonable, I think it might be worth worth a shot, but kind of the incremental approach, you know.
Uh next slide, please. We talked a little about already the uh the ADA compliance issue. Uh the tree and the brush trimming. Uh D P W has already done some of that already this summer. Uh but just driving around, you know, later in the summer now, we've seen that we've got to go back and hit them again. Uh and again, we talked about summer, not ours. Um make sure that any uh work or any developments where a contractor's involved, that they're doing the sidewalks, if there is sidewalks in that. Make sure they're doing it the right way. You know, they're they're installing the proper signage, they're making it ADA compliant. Um just to try to keep on top of the contractors. And again, enforcement is is gonna be a big issue for us uh next summer season, as well as education. Uh you know, once we start doing some of these things, we need to get out to the public. I need to get onto our Facebook page, which then gets posted, let's talk East Hampton. This is what we're gonna do. We've we've gotten really positive reviews, uh believe it or not, from our traffic enforcement activities due to the grant. Um and that one time we did it a couple of years ago with the actual crosswalk enforcement. Uh we issued just written warnings, but we had a lot of people comment, you know, thanks for being out there. You know, the ultimate goal is to prevent any type of accidents. Uh one is too many. As speed goes up, the seriousness of the accidents occurs. Next slide, please. So looking forward, the fall and winter of twenty twenty-four, we're gonna begin to address some of the signage discrepancies to make uh all the crosswalk signage uniform.
Let me just jump in really quick on that one, sorry.
Yep.
Um so one of the reasons that there is such discrepancies down there is at some point, um and I'm not even sure how we got this grant, but somebody applied for a grant with the state and D O T came in and they did a bunch of crosswalks around town and that's why some of them have the shark teeth, some don't. And there's not really a rhyme or reason to why they did or didn't do certain things, so um that's just a reason why there's so just the discrepancies there. So what we're gonna try and do is, where we can, make all of the crosswalks walks like that nice one that you were showing me by Clark Hill.
So so can we find D O T for not getting proper permits from?
Right, exactly. They didn't, they didn't come to me for a uh right away for a minute.
Right away for a minute, yeah.
And they wanted to keep my signs, but I kept them. So I did get my old signs back from them, so.
So I think what you're saying, Matt, if I may, is we would begin to address not only the signage, but are you talking about pavement marking as well?
Oh, yeah. So, yeah, yeah, carrying on with that, sorry, I interrupted. So this fall, winter, I think that's one of the things we'll undertake, is trying to make consistency with the signs, that's stuff we can do here in the winter. Summertime, we'll look at painting all of the crosswalks the same, right? And kind of like the whole pedestrian corridor thought, you know, at least all the ones around the lake. You know, at least all the ones around the lake, you know, up until um. What is that candlewood? You know, they'll all be red, you know, and then all the way up to, you know, and then I'm sidetracking here. So with this pedestrian corridor, and this is kind of a a question for you guys is, you know, what do you want that to look like? Do we wanna do this whole thing where everything in the corridor looks this way? Do we want all the sidewalks to be red? Do we want them all to have? The same kind of look um with the Village Center and that project that's going out, they are all spec to have this thermal plastic. Right, so that's already gonna be done. So the goal, I think, you know, in my opinion, would be nice to have all of them. Be, you know, not all of them thermal plastic, but at least all of them. Bad or, you know, looking similar. Um, so anyway, as far as the painting goes, we'll even start that next summer, trying to make them all look the same, provided everyone wanted that. Uh, cause it is a different look than what we have now. Ongoing, you know, I think it would be a good idea to look at like a master sidewalk plan and develop like a pedestrian corridor. Um, that would help us with saying. You know, where we want to add sidewalks, where we might not need sidewalks, like for instance, you know, we've gotten a lot of feedback from residents on Walnut. Um, continuing the sidewalks up Walnut to get to Smith Street. You know, so I think that would aid us in that, you know, getting public input. Um, secondly, it helps you apply for grants, like connectivity grants. When you have a plan, you can show them, hey, this is where we're trying to get. And uh, I think it would be a help. Um, and that gets us to utilizing the grant fund, uh funding for. Additional projects, upgrades, cause they do get expensive when you start getting all beacons and the thermal plastics.
So when are we gonna have a plan?
As soon as possible.
But I think before we come up with a plan, we need to know what your vision is.
Right.
So we could come up with a plan, but if it's not what fits your vision. Man, it really is not a good plan. So it's like what would you like to see? And then we can get the plan to get us there. If I may, that sounded like a question to you, but I think it's too open ended of a question.
Yes.
Um. You've heard a lot about, about the sidewalks and and one of the, so take away a few things, right? One, uh, we're talking about standardizing our crosswalks, okay? And in this case, I'm talking about. What does the pavement look like? What do the pavement markings look like? What does the signage look like? Uh, you saw some, some options there. Obviously, there's an expense here. That's probably a down the road. So we're gonna start working on those things. We're gonna start working on uh. Unifying the look. Unless you sit here tonight and tell me, no, we don't want red crosswalks, we're probably gonna start putting in red crosswalks because that's paint.
Right.
It's just paint. We can do that pretty easily.
It's actually probably.
No, okay, cause it's just a monolithic paint, okay? Uh, so we're gonna start doing that unless you complain and say, no, we don't want red crosswalks. But we'll start doing that in the Lake Drive corridor, uh Smith Street, you know, those school areas that we talked about. Where I think we start to get into uh decision points. And maybe you're not ready to say yes, or maybe it's just as see what you can pursue is the answer. Um, but. The gentleman alluded to master planning. I think that's appropriate that we should start to dive into master planning. Uh, it's been kind of on the list for a little while, but with the topsy turvy that we've gone through in some staffing. Uh, we've sort of put it on the back burner, but I think it's appropriate. It starts with an inventory. Of where all of our sidewalks are, what's their condition, what's their accessibility, uh all of those things. Uh, Matt and I've had some discussions about how we would handle doing a master plan. No idea how much it costs. We're gonna have to look into that. Uh. Perhaps it's something that we would include in a budget discussion next year that would seem appropriate. From that, I think then we start to look at. Where are we gonna, and during that? That master planning process, I think we begin to look at. Where do we want to take our crosswalks? I'm gonna use the phrase to the next level. Where do we want to do rapid flashing beacons? Where do we want to pull up the concrete and, or the asphalt rather, and do the thermal plastic that's in front of uh. Councilman for Cunningham. When do we, where do we want to do that? So um, these are some things, and I think it's triggered by. Uh, council saying, yes, do the things you're doing as a staff. And why don't you bring back to us some uh some budgeting for master planning? And we'll begin to decide where are some of these heavier duty sidewalks that we, or crosswalks rather, that we want to mark up. Um, so. That's, I think, kind of the, the big picture summary, and I think the next slides get you to, are there questions? Jack is raising his hand.
So I, I think there's really two issues. I mean, this started being driven by safety. And but I think we've moved beyond safety and and I'm not saying that's not a valid thing to talk about. But, you know, because making them all uniform. Um, is not a safety issue. Except in the sense that maybe the.
Well, the, the thought, I'm sorry, the thought with making them all uniform is that I think it kind of leads, leads the driver to realize that, hey. I'm in a pedestrian area, a heavily traveled pedestrian area, kind of like when you go into some of these smaller New England villages and you see they all have the same crosswalks. Whether they're cobblestone or brick, like you get that idea, like they wouldn't do that if there weren't a lot of people walking here.
Like the state does with the stop sign. They'd say, this is the only stop sign you can put up. It's this size. Well, that's not true. You can get, it's all different sizes, but you understand what I'm saying is. It's, it's red, it looks like this, the yield signs look this way, you know, and and it, it's back to uniformity, so people can go through.
They're saying uniformity is a safety issue.
Well, it, it, it's an enhance, it's, it's, it's an enhancement to people. Driving down the road, they see it, and I use the example of uh Middletown, their main street now, when they've redone that. Pretty much from the time you come over the Aragoni Bridge to the time you almost get down to where the hospital is. Every one of those intersections is that material.
Hmm.
You know, and you go through and you feel it. And everything is the same, so you say, oh, here's another one, here's another one. You don't see a red, a white, or nothing.
And they have one of those reflective pedestrian crossing, like every third or fourth.
Yeah.
Crossing point on the road.
So that's why the uniform.
That, that's important.
I'm, I'm curious, cause the ADA compliance thing, like has been something that I, I don't think anybody. Be surprised we have issues, but it was pretty glaring, every one of those examples, had ADA issues. And that, to me, should be a top priority in fixing. Cause I, people that use the sidewalks quite often, I see wheelchairs, motorized scooters, walkers. People with mobility issues and when there's. It's when it's difficult, it's, you know, it makes mobility through town harder, not to mention, you know, the law. So what, what are we gonna do to fix the ADA issues?
Some of those you can't fix because they go. Onto someone's property, you know. The other side that's on the town side, you potentially could fix, but some of it's gonna cost money.
Then the thing to consider too is it's not just uh mobility issues, it's also the blind. So if you.
Right.
Make an ADA crosswalk on one side and the.
Right.
I maybe blind is visually impaired, you know, they're gonna feel. It's not good, you know, so it's definitely.
Right. But I, I think that needs to be part of the master plan. It was like, wherever it's possible, we gotta address that.
Well, we shouldn't have a crosswalk.
Into somebody's yard.
Into somebody's yard, yeah. We just didn't, just shouldn't be there, right?
Well, I don't know that you can say that universally. That's kind of where we said, where I made the comment, is they were making their presentation. It's where people have crossed. I suspect that most of those crossings that you see on, on. Lake Drive are responsive to where people cross. The one that we get resistance for removing. Is because that's where people cross. They come down those stairs. They cross over to the lake. There is a shred of compliance there, I'm afraid.
Right.
But that's what they do. It's sort of like, I mean, look at the New Haven Green, it's got sidewalks on it, because that's where people walk.
Right.
And they just responded to that. So. It's an acceptable practice to put a crosswalk into an intersection.
Right, you can put the crosswalk into the side street off into the shoulders, which we have in several.
Right.
Instances, so that's okay.
The oddity is those locations where it crosses to literally, as we pointed out, somebody's front yard, hedge yard, condos.
Or a wall.
Edge of condos, the front yard or a wall or whatever. That one could have been adjusted, it's, it's the.
Harry Potter crossing last night, it's, yeah. Nine and three.
So I, I don't know that you can unilaterally say those just should go away.
All right. But can we make them more safe for the people that use them?
Um.
Well, the, the good thing about the one that we think should go away is that it's completely not ADA compliant, so. No one's gonna, like especially visual, visually impaired, they're not gonna know there's a crosswalk there. And try and get off and get on the other side, but there's still not a, a ramp or anything like that. So, and even the case in somebody who's mobility impaired. They can't get across the road there either, cause there's nowhere to go. So. That is the only upside of that crosswalk, is that it's just completely noncompliant, and you couldn't even try to use it, you know.
I think. I think part of the answer that you're perhaps looking for is. Where we have the control. We can move forward with a, with a remedy more easily. I think we have to make sure that we know in terms of the technical warning strip or bumps. Where that's gonna go and where it shouldn't go. In, in reference to Matt's. Comment about the visually impaired. If as part of our long-term master plan. Again, completely believe that's appropriate. We identify locations, acquire property that we want to. Improve that part of the crossing, then I think we're talking to somebody about an easement, and what does that mean?
Hmm.
Um, in re, in practice, those, some of those conversations will get a little tricky.
Hmm.
I'm afraid. Anywhere we control the, the, um, how do I want to say this?
The right.
Linear path along the sidewalk or along the roadway. Um, we could make it a policy uh of the town. Uh, and Matt will have to look at the cost impacts here, that when we're doing, and this is sort of what the policy of the state is, although. In, now in words only, um, is that when we're doing roadwork. We're supposed to fix the adjacent um accessibility matters at the intersection. Um, unfortunately, the state doesn't always do that. Frankly, to be honest, we haven't always done that, but. Uh, that could be part of our activities, is that we make sure that we're doing that where we can, and that I think can be part of that plan. And that's, I think, what we were gonna get at, as we started to talk about accessibility. Uh, as rather we talked about long-term on sidewalks, where should they be? Route sixty-six, there's a plan for Route sixty-six that calls for sidewalks, maybe that's not our right way, but. In coordination with the state, should we get a sidewalk? Are there other areas of the town, well, that we talked about, that we should add sidewalks in? We'll get into the other issues related to that and maintains them and those sorts of things later, but. Absolutely, we should get there. So if this is, if this is, if we're on the right path. You all seem to think we are, cause you're all nodding. Um, if we're on the right path, then we'll continue to pursue this, and we'll begin to look at. What are some of the hard costs and how do we start knocking off some of these things that are a little bit harder? Beyond the initial pieces that Matt and the, his team will start to tackle here this following.
When the resident, uh, I think this all kicked off with a concern from a resident over speed. In this presentation. We're talking about crosswalks. We're not talking about speed. And the, I was at Lakeside a few weeks ago. Around noon. There were trucks. Residents and cars. They had to be going fifty, sixty miles an hour in front of Lakeside. I don't see where we're. Solving that issue. Or curtailing it.
So. With these sidewalk treatments. I think it will. Draw attention to people. Uh. But you're, you're right, it's, you know, the sidewalks are not gonna solve speed. They're, they're two separate issues.
Right.
But I, I think they're related because of what you just sort of alluded to, chief, I think. So. The ways we impact speed. Um, are through design of the road. You've heard the phrase road diet, I don't know how many of you heat in on that, but what that talks about is narrowing roads, physically narrow. Um. We already have a lot of narrow roads anyway. People still move pretty rapidly. The other way we do that is, um. Uh, I'm gonna call it decreasing the comfort of the driver. Whether there are physical barriers or perceived barriers. That will begin to impact speed. You know, the chief can be out there all the time and doing enforcement. We can have the signs that exist on Main Street. Uh, in the area of Lakeside. Uh, that show people how fast they're going. Eventually, some of that stuff. Doesn't have an impact, and frankly, all of this stuff eventually doesn't have an impact. But if you start to perceive physical barriers. Plants, trees along the side. Um, the signage we're talking about, you start to see more things in front of your face. It tends to slow people down, because now there's more things that they're having to focus on. The signs in the middle of the road. Will eventual, will cause some people to slow down. We're not gonna get it. Um, Dennis had uh statistics for that area that you recall we talked about. Um. Surprising that speed was thirty-seven, thirty-five, something like that.
Eighty-five percent of.
Eighty-fifth percentile, that's sort of the number, by the way, I'll remind you, that's the number that we focus on, eighty-fifth percentile. Eighty-five, eighty-five percent of the vehicles are going that speed or less, right? So. Thirty-five, thirty-seven miles an hour, yeah, I'll be, that's, I think that's. Ten over, twelve over, or is that a thirty mile? That's thirty miles, so that's a five mile, five miles over the limit. I think that's what Dennis was alluding to when he made the comment. It's not as bad sometimes as reported. I don't want to discount, you talked about safety, I think that's important. Where I think we have the issue is how do we make sure that the drivers are starting to see? There's pedestrians in the area, there's other things that are going on. And we anticipate that some of the program changes that we're talking, the programmatic change, if you will, with the changes to signage. The reintroduction of speed limit signs. That was one of the things we talked about early on in this whole conversation. There's like one. In that stretch, I think, we need more, we need to remind people, hey, it's, you know, whatever speed limit here. Um. I think those kinds of things are gonna help address that. Human nature is, is something that. We're gonna have to combat all of it. But some of this stuff we anticipate will. Part as well, I think.
Well, I'm, I was just. Upstate New York, okay? And round the lake, as I went into the village, there were speed bumps. That slowed people coming down from the mountain. And you know, it was in the Adirondacks. Blue Mountain Lake, and there's at either end coming down into this, to the village, they had speed bumps. And they had those yellow things in the middle of the road.
Were they using them, was it one, um, was it a traditional bump like you'd see in a parking lot? Or was it uh more of a table like they use?
No, they were humped. I mean, you went over.
Were they like this wide?
Yes.
Like. So. What was the speed of the road supposed to be?
Thirty.
At thirty miles an hour, you hit those bumps. You're gonna start to cause damage to cars, even at speed. And then if you get some knucklehead that goes, hits that at forty-five at night. And then they hit that too fast and lose control on that very narrow street, speaking of Lake Drive. You have secondary issues.
Hmm.
And then you have plowing issues, you have emergency response vehicles, and. From my experience, speed humps and speed bumps are great. But they get on the gas going from point A to point B, then a next speed bump. And putting those in a residential neighborhood. You're gonna hear. It's almost like those uh strips, the rumble strips they put on a thing, which, where they're really, really loud. I'm not saying they don't work. You know, what I mean is. It, it's, it's tough, it, it becomes a plowing, a sandy, I, and New York, they get snowed just like us, but. Uh, you know, that's come up a number of times, and as you can tell, the three of us kind of resist that for a myriad of reasons. Not the least of which is we're, the things that Dennis had alluded to. Not the least of which is working, things that Dennis has alluded to, that it. It can change peak speeds as people try to make up for the fact that I just had to slow down for that thing back there. Same thing happens with stop signs that aren't in the right place and all those sorts of things. If the council's interested in that. We will look at that and see what options we might have. For implementing them in the right place. We can try and find some locations, try and find some some if I'll call it scholarly information about where they're effective. Where and what the issues are around them and we can bring that back, that's something you're all interested in in looking, and I think it's been raised by a couple of you over the. Over the last these conversations, you know, we can.
I mean, even if you put them by like just maybe put one right before you get to Sears Park. Maybe that would, I don't know.
We can look, we can look and see what's up.
Well, personally, I'm not interested in speed bumps, so I'm with you then.
We can at minimum do a little bit of of research on what the scholarly information is about that. Because you're right, we do see them, they get used. They have a challenge.
Any further questions? Thank you. Agenda item nine, new business, review and possible approval of the letter to state leaders regarding electric rates.
We have uh in your packet a draft of a letter. That was modeled after some that were written by other municipalities uh to the governor. Uh encouraging the governor and others to act uh to to uh support residents, electric rate paying residents. Against the large increases that have been authorized. I attempted to draft the letter for you that I think is intended to go out over uh council chair Markham's signature. Um I attempted to draft a letter for you that acknowledged that there has been some discussions ongoing at the state, but at this point, there hasn't been any. Definitive action. Um but it still calls for and alludes to some of the uh same types of actions that are. Our partner municipalities have called for as well, using uh delaying costs uh that are being reimbursed to or. Perhaps making ever source pay them out of their profits or using state funds to offset some of the costs of the things that the state asked to be done. So that's the letter that we are proposing uh right at this point to. Uh send up to the state to add to the chorus, as I think I probably have said to some of you individually, add to the chorus of municipalities that are calling for some kind of action.
David, does um is United Illuminating also included in this?
Uh I I I don't know for sure, but I assume that they have some of the same types of requirements, I could find out if you're interested.
They do, should we include add that to the letter or just leave it as ever source?
Uh since United Illuminating doesn't serve our area, um I I think it's appropriate just to leave it with ever source at this point.
If I may, just in the spirit of transparency, um. As a disclaimer on whatever I may say regarding this issue. I work for a small nonprofit that receives funding from ever source annually. So just so that's out there, everybody's aware. I don't think it's going to color my opinion on anything, but.
Directly affect your compensation?
They do not, the organization receives the money, I do not.
Are there any other comments regarding the letter as presented?
Looks good.
If you think it's appropriate, it would be appropriate to put a motion on the floor to.
I guess the only comment I'd have is the governor did make a statement about a week ago that. There was no no way he was supporting special session, so. We're just adding on to the communities that are saying, yes, we should have this and we're bucking up against. Your and and the governor at this point.
I I don't disagree.
And the legislative leaders, I suspect, who are.
Can the legislature leaders call a special session without the governor?
Oh, yes. But they're not going to.
I move we uh. Prove this letter as written and send it along to the uh. Governor and uh all of the. Uh copied individuals.
Your comment on the motion. If not, those in favor. I put me the letter state signify by saying aye. Pose nay.
Thank you, we'll get that out.
Now, men of this report.
As you've heard me say many, many times, my written report is uh in your packet is online. Uh will be tomorrow, actually unless Kathy did it before she left for the weekend. Um and is available for folks to take a look at, I would like to highlight uh. Uh now only two things that are that are one that's in the report and one that is is not. Matt uh. As you know, led on our behalf, the Wapawag Road uh project to uh replace that culvert that washed out in Ja- in January. Uh I I don't think there's anybody more excited in town. Perhaps other than the residents immediately in that area to to be able to say that it opened. Uh for business uh about a week and a week or ten days ago. Uh Monday, the twenty sixth, uh we took the barricades away and traffic was able to cross. Uh at Wapawag Road uh south of Tarsha again, and. That uh project, I think, came out uh as well as we could have expected, uh the contractor that was there. Uh while they had some challenges uh during construction and it took a little bit longer than we anticipated. Uh was able to get that project completed and uh we think it is in good uh in good place, in good stead. Last final uh pieces of restoration are being done uh at this point, I think today Matt told me they had put. Uh there or maybe it was yesterday, put down the last uh. Restoration of seeds and uh soil and seed. A small bit more yet to be done, okay, so there's a little bit of work left to be done there, punch list items are being. Uh addressed by the contractor, but I think they're gonna be finished and out uh of the picture here shortly. Uh I'll remind everyone that the last piece of the work that gets done is the paving. Uh and uh the Department of Public Works crews will handle that paving activity, uh probably uh just before winter comes. Give that roadway that uh that base that's down there now a little bit of time to settle, make sure it's in good place. Uh then they'll go through, do a little cleanup, uh make sure they've got the right ground on the road and then uh put new pavement down. Uh so that'll be then that'll close that project out uh in its entirety. I will say, just as an aside, uh if we look at that project uh and the. The challenges that we encountered in fixing that. Imagine what our neighbors to the west are facing right now. Oxford, Southbury, those communities that lost multiple roads. I can't even fathom uh that uh that the day after that took place. Matt and I spent some time talking about what if it were us, what would we do? And how do we think about addressing that in the future? So uh stay tuned, we'll probably come back to that discussion at some point. The other thing I'll mention uh. Uh that is is not in my report, uh but again, it relates to public works, it's uh. Relates to milling and paving, uh you know that every year we do this work and uh so. Uh some of the residents that live on Barton Hill, Forest, Hayes, East Hayes have seen us up there working. Uh doing some replacement on storm structures and that sort of thing. There is a method to the madness, that's the roads that are gonna be paved uh this part of the year, uh and as I've been advised by Matt, that. Contract work will start uh sometime around Monday, surprise, here we come. Uh residents will see uh the milling equipment will start to arrive uh Friday, I think. Friday or Saturday, that equipment will start to arrive uh on site and be stored off the right of way, I think on Forest somewhere. Uh and residents in that area should uh be aware that. There will be some delays as we mill off part of the surface, in some cases, all of the surface and do some rebuilding work. Uh and then put a new surface back on, this is Barton Hill uh from Route sixty six to Oak Knoll. Uh and then, as I mentioned, uh Forest Hayes and East Hayes uh off of Barton Hill there. Uh the other roads that are in that area, the balance of Barton Hill and Maple, uh both need some additional drainage work. Uh so that'll take place in the future, I don't know that we've uh scheduled that yet, uh but that's coming down the pike as well. Um so uh we'll also, uh Matt and I talked about, he'll be putting out the variable message board that the town has. Somewhere in that corridor to try and help uh folks. Excellent, uh uh friendly landowner that we all know and love, uh who lives at the corner of Barton Hill and sixty six. Is going to let us use part of his property for that, so we will help uh the residents be aware that we're gonna be in there doing some work. You have the report, uh otherwise, those are my comments, if there are questions, I will certainly answer them.
Well, sir, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to agenda item eleven, appointments, appointment of members to the America two fifty committee. I would like to appoint or nominate. Uh two fine. Members of our community to be co-chairs of this two fiftieth anniversary of the country celebration. Uh one is our own council member, Jack Solomon, and the other is Kevin Wright. Kevin has been waiting patiently in the rear of the room. But I I guess I put that in a form of a motion to me, but.
May I ask, are you going to put a term ending date on that? Of perhaps.
Perhaps uh December thirty first, twenty twenty six. As a friendly amendment. Is there a second chair's motion?
Oh, second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Comments, if not, those in favor, signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Kevin, would you like to say anything at this time?
All I'm gonna say is I sat here for almost two hours and these seats go south after about an hour and fifteen minutes.
Jack?
Yeah, you know, although Kevin and I are co-chairs of this, it is not our vision. That we do the work. It is our vision that this be a celebration for the town and that everybody. Um has a role to play and uh and so we're thinking we'd like. Well, we'll seek um council and. Participation by all kinds of groups, every uh from theater groups to. Participatory groups to service groups and all of those groups participate in the way they think. They wanna participate, I mean, we don't wanna necessarily direct everybody, but we'd like ideas. On what should be done and how 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 can this be fun for everybody?
Thank you. As I said, there's two motions, the second motion, I have a group of. Seven individuals who have asked to participate in the commission or the committee, and I'd like to present their names as well. Uh they include uh Terry Concanon. Kathy Saroyes, our own uh clerk and administrative aide to the. Town manager, council member Deb Cunningham. Karen Johansmeyer, now Karen is a resident of Portland, but she's very in. Involved comes to our meetings and it seemed to me that it where she lives in Portland. Was part of Chatham in seventeen seventy six, which was our community, so she's a representative. From the past and the future, I guess. Uh John Tuttle, John is very involved with Old Home Day and we expect. Old Home Day Parade and Weekend in uh twenty twenty six to be a big. focal point of of this activity, Teresa Schulman. And Carol Morris, Carol's president of the Chatham Historical Society. So those seven names I would put up as a beginning of the many that we expect to participate. In the process.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made, second, is there a second?
I second it.
Second it, any discussion? Here none, those of.
I'm concerned. I feel like East Hampton residents should have first crack at the committee for East Hampton, and I I understand what you're saying about Portland, but.
No, the the committee is open for is essentially as many nominations and people who wanna work.
Okay, all right, there's no limit.
There's just a minimum, I believe, of five in the resolution. Those in favor?
I'd just like to mention that uh our our chairman, who is an amateur historian. Has uh researched what happened in East Hampton in seventeen seventy six. And he found that there was a Board of Selectmen at that time. And the chair of the Board of Select in the seventeen seventy six. Wrote a letter in support of the revolution of the um the efforts by the continental.
I believe that's correct.
So East Hampton had a role. That we shall celebrate in addition to the US.
I would also mention that in some. Wikipedia. Profiles of East Hampton, they refer to three battles fought in the American Revolution in East Hampton. At Hartford Heights, now for the life of me, I have no idea where Hartford Heights is and. There is no other reference anywhere histor- authoritatively that Revolutionary War battles were actually fought here. So we've corrected that misnomer. Moving on to. Agenda item twelve, tax refunds. I mean, I know.
I'll make the motion, I would I'll make a motion that the we refund four thousand four hundred eighty six dollars and forty four cents. To the folks in town who overpaid their share.
It's forty five cents.
Isn't that what I said?
No. I I believe you said forty four, just make sure we don't short anybody their penny.
I said forty five.
Yes, you did. Is there any discussion? Those in favor signify by saying aye. Pose nay. Public remarks, is there anyone who wishes to make the public more, public remarks or comments at this time? I see no hands. I don't think anybody is raising their hand on Zoom. Moving on, communications and correspondence.
I have one very brief announcement that I'd like to make, um everyone on the council and hopefully the public knows that I am the drama director for Center School. That was a position I held before I became uh elected to the council. And I am holding a fall theater program through Parks and Recreation, a lot of our community members, teachers do that. Um the parents pay for those programs, the fees that they pay cover the cost of supplies, they cover the costs of Parks and Recreation to administrate that. And um they cover, they would cover my time for running the program. Uh so just to be very clear and transparent, it's an opportunity that the parents pay for. Um I'm not being paid out of any tax dollars for, I just wanna make sure all of my fellow council members are and the public is aware of that.
Okay, are you gonna be bringing drama to the council?
I absolutely, don't I bring all the drama?
Are there any other comments or questions other than the report that the. I'm going to present it. Tom Winter is presented. If not. Item fifteen, adjournment. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, those in favor, aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.